Good evening and welcome to the School Building Committee on Monday, May 13th at 6:30 PM. First, what did I say? Scooted up already? We're off to a great start. And on we go. Let's start with the acceptance of the minutes from the minutes of the school committee meeting of April 22nd. All those in favor? And the minutes of the executive session meeting on April 22nd. All those in favor? And I see nothing under correspondence, so we'll start into audience. First up, we have the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award.
Excellent. Yes, I'd like to invite John Ellard up to join me at the podium, please. Dr. Harrison, would you like this? How are ya? Good. Alright, I'm in that awkward between the glasses. Do I use them, do I not use them? Each year, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award is presented to an outstanding senior who has demonstrated the most outstanding academic achievement. This year, it is my pleasure to recognize John Ellard. As a junior, John was recognized as an AP Scholar with Distinction. By the time he graduates from Rockland High School, he will have taken 10 Advanced Placement courses. John's strong performance on the PSAT test qualified him to enter the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program, and he received a letter of commendation. This is a huge accomplishment, as he was one of the 50,000 highest-scoring participants out of the 1.6 million test takers. John Ellard is a member of the National Honor Society and has been class president for the past four years. Elected by his peers, John has provided consistent leadership for his class. John was also the school's Boy State Representative in 2018, and during his sophomore year, he attended the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar. He completed an internship this past summer with State Representative David Decost at the State House. During the 2017-2018 school year, John participated in a school-sponsored international service learning trip to Guatemala with 15 other students. I am proud to present the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award to John Ellard III. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Mills has asked for a few words.
I just want to say, it's a great honor to get this. You don't know how much it means to me, knowing all my hard work and dedication has paid off. I'm just happy to represent such a great town and great community, so, thank you guys.
Where are you going to school?
The University of Virginia.
Great for you.
Thank you so much. Awesome.
Very proud of you.
Good job, John.
Dr. Harrison?
It's now my privilege to present the Massachusetts Secondary School Administrators Association's Student Achievement Award, which is known as the Principal's Award. It's presented to an outstanding senior who's made the greatest impact within our school community. This year's recipient is Kaitlyn Cameron, so come on down, Kaitlyn, and I get to say good things about you. Kaitlyn is well-regarded in our community for her thoughtfulness, her intellectual curiosity, and her just outstanding character. She's really made a difference in our classrooms, after-school at the high school, and really in the community at large. She's a National Honor Society student and challenged herself with very difficult courses, about seven Advanced Placement courses in her time here. It reflects her determination to succeed academically and really broaden her, I like to say, intellectual horizons. She's twice been recognized at our Underclassmen Award Ceremony, and she's been the recipient of the Outstanding Academic Achievement Award in History and Social Science and Family and Consumer Science. She's also an AP Scholar. Kaitlyn is currently the Student Government Council President at Rockland High School, and she's done a phenomenal job leading our student body, embracing us as an inclusive school culture, where all students are accepted and diversity is embraced. She's really made our school better. Whether it's Project Pumpkin, the Breast Cancer Awareness Walk, over 130 people participated in the Breast Cancer Awareness Walk, an outstanding pep rally, freshman orientation, Kaitlyn was in front of all of this as one of the planners, and people follow her. They follow her leadership, and that's a testament to how she conducts herself on a daily basis. She was articulate, well-versed at freshman orientation. She was so good, I asked her to come back for the open house, so I had her be the keynote speaker in two events. And one thing you learn is if you don't like to speak, you do a bad job, because they won't ask you again. So I keep trying to do that. She's been active in images. She's one of our captains in mock trials, and she was one of our first recipients of the Top Dog Club Award. So it gives me great honor to present Kaitlyn with the Principal's Award. Want me to stay on for Environmental Club?
Oh, no, we're gonna go on to...
Yes, we should have Kaitlyn say something.
This is too hot for me. I'm honored. It's really nice to be recognized by a community that has such a great impact on your life and to know you left a lasting impact somewhere. So great.
Where are you going to school?
Hofstra, University.
Alright, 4th graders, take a look at these two. Hard work, have fun, be passionate, and you can be just like them.
That's the truth. Thank you. Congratulations. Next up, we're gonna actually move, if it's okay with the rest of the committee, the Curriculum Corner up to now, since the kids have MCAS this week, so that way we can get them home at a decent hour. So come on up.
I love Curriculum Corner. And this looks like it's gonna be fun. I see messy stuff.
I feel like we're gonna get wet. You want us to come up too?
I feel like...
Are we going up there?
She just asked us to.
I feel like Dave's a little apprehensive about the water here and the students.
I feel like I need an apron.
Oh, I'm sure he is.
Oh, thank you. Hi. Welcome. Anybody else wanna come up?
Come on, Catherine, you're going to school there. Promising, that's science.
So, we've been studying about rocks and soil, so the kids are here to present an experiment that came along with a great program that we have this year. So we'll let them introduce themselves.
I'm Emma Lynn.
I'm Kayla Maslin.
I'm Joseph Winnie.
I'm Dandee Wazner.
Nice to meet you all.
I know, welcome. Thanks for coming tonight. Do you want to tell them a little bit about what they're gonna see here?
So, today what we're gonna do is deposition and erosion. So erosion is when like, water erodes the sand and clay that's in our soil. And it's gonna deposit all the way at the end.
And how are these two different?
This is flood and this is standard.
So what's the variable? What are we changing?
So this has a tinier hole and this has a bigger hole.
And what else is similar about how the trays are set up?
They have two stands so they can... Also, they have this little tiny pathway to go.
Anybody else, what's that S word? Is that a slant or a... Slope, right. On the show? Ready? Okay. What'd you do? What'd you do? Understand the water's all set? Yep.
Washing hands?
I don't remember doing fun stuff like this in 4th grade.
It's pretty great.
I feel the need to help. I think they can handle it.
Ready? Yep. Go.
Oh, open the floodgate.
Because it has a bigger hole.
The bigger hole creates more of a bigger force. So why do you see more white than sand?
Because that's clay.
And why is the clay moving down farther than the sand? Got it. And this one's finally making it. Well, leave it Charlie.
It will get there.
Reminds us of weather we've had lately.
Soon to have again.
Just to add to it, we had a waterman blow in front of the house today.
Anything else your kids want to say?
How's your moment? You're on TV?
Right, right.
Oh, let's see. I got a question. Okay, how come, you know, the erosion is bigger hole here than with...
Because this is the flood and this is the standard, so this is like regular and this is like...
Alright, so do you think the water had more force coming out and going down? Sounds good.
So what are the fun stuff that you guys get to do? I assume this is in science class, so... You gonna dump it on me?
What else have we gotten to do? Morse code?
Really?
Yeah, we built a... It worked, right? A little bit. Lot of trial and error. We've all learned a lot.
So what does that make you guys feel about science as a subject?
It's great.
Yeah?
Fun.
You think it's easy?
You don't have to say it to me.
Maybe it will challenge them sometimes, maybe you won't understand it.
Right.
Exactly. There's always someone there to give you a hand.
Did you get into equations about this? Some of the mathematical ones?
That's like, I now hate science. Well, that's great.
Very good.
I like that you guys can do stuff like this.
Not that we... I had a good time in 4th grade. I was in the Esten School too, and it was just a couple of years ago.
They wouldn't let you play the sandbox. I can understand. Okay, good job.
Alright, good job.
Looks like all of our coats are... Just a few years ago.
A few years before mine. Alright. I cleared the room.
Service learning, right?
Service learning, yep.
Right. I was letting them go, but now we're... Okay. Next on the agenda...
Just give them a second.
I just said it.
Should we get the camera back at our normal angle now?
I know, that's what messed me up in the beginning.
How come the adults spilled the water?
That's what happens when the principal shows up in science.
Yeah?
Everyone ready?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the RHS Service Learning.
RHS Service Learning.
Who do we got?
Hi, welcome.
As I say, you are here an awful lot.
I wanted to thank you guys for hosting us tonight. I thought it would be a really appropriate time to give the committee and the rest of the Bulldogs in town an update on some of the work that our groups have been doing in Guatemala over the last three years, and then specifically focus on the kids that were able to attend the trip this past year. So, thank you guys for having us. Just to talk a little bit about what the Service Learning Club has been able to accomplish since 2017, when we made our inaugural trip. We've had three completed trips consecutively in 2017, 18, and 19. During those three trips, we've been able to host 48 students, six of whom have elected to go on repeat trips. Some of them not even with RHS, but of their own volition, which I think speaks volumes to what the trip has been able to impart in the students who have participated. Additionally, 500 individuals in Guatemala, most of them being indigenous Mayan people, now have access to clean, sustainable drinking water. A lot of what our kids cover when they go on a trip is what that means. Like, what is water security and insecurity? And what is food security and food insecurity? And why is it such an important part of being able to break that cycle of poverty? So it's really special to kind of see these kids break out of their roles as students and become leaders, not only with each other, but also with people that they've never met and people who are from a completely different cultural background. These students not only delivered these filtration systems, but they also spent the time learning how to assemble them, training the women and families in how to use them, and then helping them practice the cleaning process. By keeping these filtration systems clean and operating properly, they're providing drinking water for seven to 10 years, just with one filtration system, which is remarkable. Many of the people who receive the clean drinking water have never had access to clean water in their lives. And we work with people who are newborn to 75 and 80, like, these people who have never had access to clean water, and it really does a great deal to improve their quality of life and their health. Additionally, over 1,000 people have received instruction on how to do proper handwashing and proper dental hygiene. And this is a big deal, because if you're drinking dirty water, it affects your GI system. But when you're using it to also brush your teeth, it gets directly into your blood system. So the students actually are the ones leading those workshops in teaching the women and children and families how to properly care for themselves to prevent diseases and sicknesses. Those products that we use to teach them with, we actually collect here at RHS as well. And I'm really excited to say that just this past year, we collected over 12,000 individual items, between toothbrushes, floss, soap, and toothbrushes, floss, soap, and mouthwash, which is really exciting. But over the last three years, we've collected over 20,000 items and then brought most of them down. And if we haven't brought them down, they're literally waiting to be taken on the next trip, which is really amazing. But the biggest thing that we've been able to accomplish is that about 50 different people in Guatemala have been enrolled in Worthy Village's family sponsorship program. And what that means is that an individual, oftentimes a student we've brought with us or somebody in their family or somebody that they're connected with, has opted to give $30 a month. And that $30 a month might just be a couple lattes here and there for us. But for these families, it's funding their education, their healthcare, and it's providing basic food staples and vitamins for them and their children, which is really incredible. But I think you guys hear from me and you hear from Ms. Lanigan and you hear from Ms. Mederos a lot. And I thought tonight would be a really special opportunity for some of our kids to share about their most impactful moments. And then for their parents to also share a little bit about the changes and the things that they witnessed from their children being on the trip. So I wanted to introduce first Ms. Lara Glennon.
Alright, so these two little boys that I met, they're both five years old. This first picture, his name is Andres, and I met him on our first day installing water filters. So it was immediately very shocking to see the extreme poverty and the conditions of the families and the homes we were working in. But then I met this boy. I wasn't in the group installing the filter. I was waiting for my turn. So I was able to entertain him and whatnot while the class was being taught on how to use the filter. And the pure joy that he got out of these little toy cars that we brought was insane, because you would expect in these conditions that their spirits would be much lower. But they were so grateful for everything they had and grateful for us being able to come and help them in any way, that it was really amazing to see. And then this next boy, Juan, I met him the first day that we taught the health unit. So we were hearing about these things, you know, we have to teach them to brush their teeth, to wash their hands, to eat vegetables, these kind of things, where you would expect the conditions to be so low because they don't have these basic needs and these like, basic understanding of hygiene. But again, all the children there were so just internally grateful and so excited to see people and have people visit them, that it was just both heartbreaking and amazing to be able to witness.
I have been fortunate enough to go to Guatemala twice on these trips. And what has changed since I've gone back is I started to work at a daycare. So I got to see what a healthy child looks like. But when I went back, I really saw how some of the 10-year-olds I met were smaller or just as big as the five-year-olds I work with at the daycare. So that shock was, it was a lot. But with that shock, it also, it shows, it like, taught me what I was passionate about and helped me decide what I wanted to do after I leave Rockland High School. And I am lucky enough to be able to find something that does make me so happy, but also helps out other people in the process.
Hi, so I'm Tyler, and I went to Guatemala last February. And in the villages where these photos were taken, there was a woman and her three kids who came up to Ms. Lanigan and two of the social workers, and asked to be in the sponsorship program because of, because her husband got injured and could not work and support their family. So it was pretty amazing to see how people knew who Ms. Lanigan and the two social workers were, and they would come up to them in order to get help. And it's amazing to see all that Worthy Village has been able to do to the Guatemalans.
Hi, I'm Melissa, and the most impactful moment for me from this past February was seeing like, the difference in the lives that we live and the lives that they live and how much we take for granted every single day. The pure happiness that the kids had watching their moms learn how to use the water filters and how eager they were to help out was just like, so life-changing for me, because I feel like on a day-to-day basis, we take for granted water and all the like, food that we have access to, and how we always replace water with like, other drinks instead of like, really focusing on how important water is. And just the happiness that they had taking the first sip of clean water was just amazing to me. And just being able to have that impact on their lives forever is just really life-changing.
I'm Lizzie. The most impactful moment from my trip was in this middle photo. We had like, these little spinny like, top things that we brought. And like, because of doing workshops before with the language and the culture, we had like, a little bit of understanding of their language. It's called Catchy Call, so I was able to like, count to three with them, and we would spin the tops, and like, whosever would stay on the, like, the stump the longest would win. And like, they were so excited about like, how much fun it was. And that was just really like, eye-opening to see like, such a small thing, like, be able to like, make five kids happy for so long was like... It just felt so, I felt so grateful that I was able to be a part of it.
And then at this point, I'd like to invite the Glennons, Mr. Patton and Mr. Johnson down. We wouldn't be able to do trips like this without the support of the school committee and without the support of our superintendent and our principal, but of course, without the support of the parents as well. So I just would like to invite you guys to say anything that you may have noticed about how the trips impacted your kids.
Sure. Do we get a slide? There we go. I just, you know, I wanted to talk about like, what I felt before they went and what I felt after they went. And before they went, I was, you know, very, I felt very comfortable, very confident, and very safe for Tyler. He was the only boy going on the trip, or the only male student going. It was a male teacher. There was informational meetings. We were kept up to date. Even at the last moment, when there was a change in transportation, which was great, the communication was just there. You can research all this on the internet, and I felt very confident and very safe. It's, Tyler came back a different person. I feel I'm always fighting the battle of trying to teach my kids not to be spoiled and trying to provide them things that I never had growing up. And in the process, they are being, coming a little spoiled. This trip was perfect, I think, to center him. We've gone on some great trips, gone all around the place. He's gone on the Travel Club. He said this trip was his best. It kind of hurt my feelings for all the money we spent on all other trips. But he said this was the best, and I think it has a lot to do with the fact that he felt that he was giving back and that he was the one to, to take control of his own trip there and do, and give back to these people, that he takes a lot of the stuff for granted. He came back a changed kid, and it was nice to see. And I hope he goes next year and is able to get that opportunity again. I want to thank you, Mr. Phelps, because a long time ago, when Tyler, who was just up here, all six, three of them, was three years old, I was on a committee with you, Joe Wise-Gerber and Scott McKinley. And I was asking you guys, hey, I want to send my kids, they were four and three, I'm gonna send them to private school, what do you guys think? And you guys, all being educators and in the, in the system of the school committee and all that, and you told me to get, send them here. And I am so happy we did. And it's the trips like this that make it, make it worth all that while. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Meredith Glennon, Lara's mom.
Pat Glennon, Lara's dad.
I'll just be brief to say that I would like to think that we are a service-oriented family. So Lara has done a lot of sort of collecting of goods for various things. She has also had the opportunity to volunteer at a food pantry, where she is providing food to those in need who are coming through a line. But I think even with that context of what is need and how do we provide for others, she's still doing it in the United States of America, where people have access to clean water. They can go to a food pantry to get what they need. This was her first opportunity to see sort of, how does other areas of the world live, which is a very unique experience that not a lot of people, including myself, have had an opportunity to do. So to have the experience to understand that even helping those in need in the United States is so much different than what need means in other areas of the country. And then I will also add, one of the most moving things for Lara was communicating to the kids in Spanish. So after having Spanish with Mel and others, to be able to go down there and communicate and try and fool people to think that she is a Spanish speaker was also a great opportunity.
Yeah, and the only thing I'd like to add is, you know, our teens nowadays, a lot of them struggle with, you know, finding who they are, anxiety. It's, you know, it's a tough time to grow up. It's a lot simpler back when we were younger. And just seeing the strength of will, Lara's not necessarily always the most physically rigorous person. But seeing the pictures come back of her going out and pushing herself and being able to do so with teachers who know her and know her strengths and know her limits and are able to encourage her, but encourage her safely to really go out and prove to herself that this is something that I can do, was really moving. So the trip was a blessing, and I really hope that she will get a chance to go next year and that many classes after her will get a chance to go as well. So I want to thank you guys for proving it in the past.
Thank you.
So it's always great to go last.
So all I really have to say is ditto? Alyssa came back a changed child. Alyssa and all of her generation live off of these things. Nobody down there completely understands this. I do understand they have cell phones. But this is just a material object. She came back a changed child. She doesn't ever had to think or want for anything. I think that speaks for most of these kids in this room. The difference is, is now Alyssa sits and looks and says, hey, what about that other person? Hey, I want to do this. She came home, she showed me photos, she sat and had breakfast with me after a long ride, a plane ride, and sat there and said, Dad, I want to go... ride and plane ride and sat there and said, Dad, I want to go home and go to bed. I said, okay, but we're going to eat first because I was hungry. She sat down and had breakfast and she ate her breakfast and she said, you know what, Dad? This meal right here, this would last three, four, five days. And we're sitting here paying $5, $10 for pancakes and eggs and we're thinking nothing of it to leave it on the plate and walk away. So I really appreciate you approving the trip before. I understand the security issues. I understand the issues that I've had in the past. I will tell you that my child went there and I was assured based on what I did for homework and knowing the individuals that were running this program, that that child was never unsafe. These kids go overseas on other trips. They have more downtime than this school, this program. This program puts them in front of what they're there for. They're in front of there to learn the cultures, understand and to help. And I thank you for that and I hope you consider approving that. And I hope that Alyssa gets the opportunity to go again. Thank you all.
I think, oh yeah, please.
Because I didn't want to interrupt all the kids, but Ms. Colstrang, what is it you want to do now?
I, as of now, I'm an Asian social worker and learning Spanish.
Awesome.
We're actually really excited too because Lexi is too shy to say, but she'll be working in Guatemala this summer as well for Worthy Village, helping us to run trips like what she attended and change other people's lives for the better. So we are very excited to host her there. Yeah. I think that the kids and the parents have said it all. There's nothing much more for me to say here except for thank you again for having us. And I look forward to talking about a future trip very soon. So thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
I will just say one thing on my side of the school committee side is part of the problem or something that I challenge that I see is that we're responsible for your children and it's hard to then say, okay, you're also responsible for your children, right? And that you're choosing to let them go. And we're trying to trust in your choice and you're trying to trust in ours. So I think having this open communication that we started tonight and going forward helps us trust that we can trust everyone that we're sending all of these students to go out to bed if something happens to one of them over there. It's your child, but we kind of feel that it's our child too, you know? And it's our job to protect them as much as it's your job to protect them. So I think having this.
Any questions ever, please feel free to reach out to me.
Right. I think that's big.
I think they can get hurt on the athletic field just as much as, more danger there than they were down in.
I agree. I agree. So I'm glad that we opened this up tonight and I'm glad that you all came. I think this is a huge opportunity for all of us to just continue that communication so that we all feel on the same page. So thank you all for coming.
I just have a quick question. You know, this experience, I'm sure you've shared it with your peers in school. What do they think about it? Anybody? Go ahead.
Well, I have a lot of, I'm sorry. I have multiple friends told me since I'm a junior and I've been able to apply again this year that they had wished that they had applied and been able to go, have the opportunity to go both years and that they told me they're definitely applying to go the next summer because, the next term, because we all have nothing but positivity to share about the trip and what we've experienced.
Is there a limitation on the number of people going?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, you thought you were getting out of here.
Mel's used to this. She's here like every other week.
At this point, we're still kind of working out the details for how many chaperones and what the lodging situation will look like in Guatemala. So I can't really comment on a maximum or minimum at this point. Our goal is typically 12 to 15 just because with the amount of chaperones and traveling, being that there's some, there could be travel changes or like airport, you know, security and stuff like that. We try to keep it to 12 to 15 because that does make the most sense for us.
How many kids did you have turned down this year?
You know, I actually didn't get to partake in the application process for this past trip because I had a baby, but I'll be on it this year. So my understanding though is I, I think, I believe it was three or four, but I'm not 100% sure. In the past, it's been around five people. However, I think that as the trip is gaining popularity and more kids are learning about it and we're talking about it more as the kids are younger, because we do only take juniors and seniors, that I do think the trip is growing in popularity. Many students, many, many, many students have told me that if a 2020 trip is approved, that they would be applying. So we'll see.
Very good.
Yeah. Thank you guys again.
Thank you.
I think we're finished. You can all. We'll let you out now.
Have a good night.
Thank you for coming.
That was good.
Up next is the Environmental Club Award.
It gives me a great honor to present the Environmental Club, which is a wonderful group of students. They have an outstanding advisor, Ms. Armstrong. They're here tonight because last Monday, they went to the State House and they received the Secretary's Award for Excellence in Environmental Education. I want to talk about your accomplishments, but come up to the stage so I can, so I can look better with a good group of kids and advisor. So this organization has raised the bar for our extracurricular life at Rockland High School. Just to kind of give you an overview of some of the items that the Environment Club has been involved in, in the fall, we had four students who attended the 17th Annual Symposium on Sustainability and Environment at Bridgewater State University. They're constantly looking for opportunities to expand their education in environmental sciences. And that's something I really appreciate because we love that intellectual curiosity in kids. Students in the Environment Club researched last year and into this year, the North-South Rivers watershed and have made efforts to improve water treatment. And the students learned that their town, Rockland, is located at the headwaters of the, headwaters of the watershed and have worked to find ways, maybe they'll tell us a little about it, but to improve the water quality for downstream communities. The Environmental Club donated, and they actually won a contest the prior year for a video contest. And they donated the funds from that to purchase a hydration station, which is allowing us to have filtered water, which has over 18,000 drinks, filtered water drinks right outside the auditorium. And that's a, that's a big deal because everybody loves it, they want more, and they're drinking better quality water. And I'm seeing less plastic, I'm seeing less bottled water, which is great for the environment. And then last year, the organization took part in their third Envirothon and they placed 10th out of 2017 teams. The competition last year was at the Blackstone River Canal Heritage State Park in Oxbridge. And we wish the team well because they're going to compete this Friday in, I may be saying this wrong, but Sholen Farms in Lemonster. All right, so I introduce the Environment Club and Dr. Kron has a certificate for them.
Do. This is the 2019 Secretary's Award for Excellence in Energy and Environmental Education. This is awarded to the Environmental Club and to their teacher and a coach, Ms. Angela Armstrong, in recognition for your dedication, commitment and contribution to energy and environmental education. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
We have questions.
I always have questions.
Never that easy.
You started at the head of the watershed, right? Did you move downstream to do samplings all the way downstream or how far down?
Yeah, we had done a bunch of different spots, both upstream and downstream last year to see the differences in what we found.
What'd you find?
We found a lot of surfactants, right? In areas like local residential areas, which we suspected like dumping, people dumping stuff into the river, which was a little concerning.
Did you, did you also look at, you know, the actual environment around that, particularly each one of those sampling areas? For instance, any look at, you know, lack of canopy, a canopy over it? Okay. And then you see any difference between those there?
Not, yeah. Because the one that, the first ones we tested that were better, you can say, had more tree covered. And then the ones that were more open, that was the surfactants. And that was the one where the lady was like, yeah, they're washing. Yeah. So the areas that were more open, we saw like more surfactants and then the areas that were more covered, they had overall better quality.
Yeah, they would, yeah. Why do you think that's the case? And I'll tell you a reason why.
And you were putting people on the spot.
You don't have to answer.
I have a question. What do you know about Reed's Pond?
Reed's Pond? We found someone, we don't know how this happened or why they did it, but there's kind of a dam area and someone went down and put the board in, we think to raise the water level, maybe that residential area on the other side, trying to get more like waterfront property. So that was a little.
What about quality of the water?
It wasn't the best.
But it wasn't the worst. I mean, I see people fishing there and obviously they're eating the fish. I never see anyone swimming there, but I've heard tell, you can't, you know, you.
It's only about knee-deep.
Oh, 50 feet up the middle.
We tested Reed's Pond for fecal coliform and it tested positive. And then with the invasive species, there's a lot in Reed's Pond as well.
Okay, yeah. I know there was problems coming from upstream all the way, I shouldn't say this, but Fulton's Laundry and all that, there's a stream that comes all the way down. It was causing problems. You guys, oh, I'd probably been corrected now hopefully, but I always wondered about Reed's Pond. It just, it has a bad rap and I guess it should.
Seemed to have earned it. Anyone else? No, we'll let you go at this point. We'll keep him. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, cool.
How cool is that? Okay. Now we're on to PCA. It's the Plymouth County Education Association Award recipients. So that, we have that for this year, 2019. If you're here for that, you can come on up to the podium. Welcome. Congratulations on your awards.
Thank you.
Can you tell us something about this award?
The Plymouth County Awards are for honor awards for the teaching profession, Rookie of the Year awards for someone who taught one to three years, retirement awards for someone like me. And for Lynn, Lynn received an award for recognition for support for the teaching profession.
Oh, good. Thank you.
And Lisa got an honor award. And there were a lot more of us that.
There was. I was going to read the names.
Yeah. So we're the only ones, I guess, that are courageous enough to come on.
They won't come on, no.
Well, congratulations on your retirement. I appreciate you teaching my son.
Thank you. And I think I had Emily.
You did.
So I have a former student on school committee.
You did a good job.
That, thank you. That's telling me it's time to go.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I had you too, yes.
All right. Didn't have me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything. How do you do?
I know.
Very good, thanks.
Want to read the names?
Yeah, I'll read the names. So for Rogers Middle School, we have Lynn Beatrice, Kathleen Fulton, Shannon Looney, Megan Casagrande, Patricia Fallon, Nancy Smith and Susan Gormley.
And the R stands for rookie? What's the R stand for?
It's a great question.
Is it a repeat?
I would say rookie, sounds like a good.
A repeat award. Okay.
Sorry.
Too many questions.
Jefferson School, we have Amanda Newcombe, Margie Benson, Pamela Sheridan, Denise Creedon, Samantha Corbett, Lisa Cookin, I'm sorry if I'm messing up your names, Elizabeth Levone, Paula Richards, Kimberly Luzey. And Esten School, we have Diane Zettler, Stephanie Filippo, Carol Hawking, Mary Pistolino, Lisa Ryan and Julie McDonald. And then Memorial Park, Amanda McKellen, Anita McDonough and Ruth Ann LaChudo. And then for the retirements, we have Nancy Smith, we had Mara Carey and Joanne Mulaney. And for the service awards, we had Mrs. Bissonette, 30 years at MP, Mrs. Folsom, 30 years in the high school, Mrs. Looney, 30 years in the middle school and Wendy Caprio, 30 years at Jefferson. So thank you all. Congratulations for all of you. And then from there, we move on to Dr. Kron's superintendent report.
Thank you. All right, I have two things to report on tonight. First is just to give an overall update of the Rockland daycare relocation. Last Friday, May 10th at 9:00 AM, we had a walkthrough meeting at the McKinley Community Center where the sprinkler contractor guaranteed that we'd be able to move back into McKinley Community Center by August 7th and that only minimal amounts of classroom materials need to be cleared out for them to do their work. So it really allowed us to scale back our plans, our moving plans. Also want to thank Chief Duffy. He agreed to extend his deadline for closing the McKinley Building to allow the daycare to remain online through Friday, June 14th to help accommodate with our moving schedule. And our current moving schedule is as follows. The daycare will be closed on June 13th and 14th. On the 13th, we will actually physically move the daycare from the McKinley Building to Memorial Park School. On the 14th, the faculty of the daycare will descend upon Memorial Park and set up their classrooms so that we can open up again on Monday morning. So Monday, the 17th, will be the first day of summer session for the daycare at Memorial Park. And they will hold a special open house that day from 7:00 in the morning until 10:00 at 10:00 in the morning. So parents who are dropping off their children for the first time, they can get a look around and see everything that's going on. And we'll be having, hosting all of those classrooms, the classrooms that are, that are going to be used at Memorial Park are Rooms 3B, Room 5, Room 5A, 5B and Room 6. One other move that's happening as part of all of this is moving Dr. Miniglia and the Special Education Department, moving them from Memorial Park to the high school. And I'll be talking later about our transportation audit and how that ties into this, but part of the reason for this move has to do with coordination of special education and regular education transportation, trying to save money, but also make sure that we're, we're operating our, our transportation as safely and efficiently as possible for our students. So that is, that is the latest information on the Rockland daycare relocation. Do you have any questions or can you anticipate any questions if folks might have?
I just, I wondered about, you said how the sprinkler company doesn't need you to move too much.
Yeah.
What are the kids going to use at daycare if you don't move everything?
Well, just so we're moving, we're moving the minimal amounts of material. So during the school year, we have about 100 families that, that use the Rockland daycare. So they fill five, six classrooms. In the summer, that's scaled down to about half.
Okay.
And they tend to be the younger students.
Okay.
So the materials that they'll bring will be age-appropriate. But again, some of the materials that are at the McKinley Center are very large.
Yes, yeah.
And so we'll just, fortunately, we can keep the larger structures at the McKinley Building and just move them away from the sprinkler rows where they'll be, where they'll be working. So that, that's real savings for us, I think. Yeah, and they'll cover, and they'll cover up materials.
I just want to personally commend the administration, you doctor and the rest of the staff that has really pitched in and made this thing happen, much to the worry of all the people that have kids in the, in the system there. It tells us as school community people, I think, how valuable you folks think that program is. And I for one, and I'm sure the rest of the committee appreciate everything you've done.
You're welcome. Certainly been a lot of people involved in making this happen. It's been a good opportunity, I think, for us to work with the town even closer, for us to work with Board of Selectmen. So I think as with any, any challenge, there's opportunity and I hope that we've capitalized on it.
Good teamwork.
Yeah, very good teamwork. Absolutely. And my second item to talk about on the superintendent's report this week just has to do with, we had, when we did the budget, we asked for a middle school dean, full-time dean. When we sat down to make this happen and implement this, we started looking at the contract to see, well, how are we going to pay this full-time middle school dean? And we realized that we didn't have any language in the contract that speaks to that type of position. And we realized that we didn't have any language in the contract that speaks to that type of position. And we started asking ourselves, well, we have a dean position at the high school, but that's a part-time dean, and that dean also teaches. So, we also coupled that with the fact that we didn't get the math coach, and we have a need for increased curriculum coordination at the middle school. So, rather than post for a full-time dean, we'd like to post for a middle school, a second middle school assistant principal. It allows us to take the discipline and split it between two individuals. So, one can take half the alphabet and the other can take the other half. Or if Principal Bond decides, she could have one vice assistant principal be responsible for Grade Seven and Eight and the other for Five and Six, however she chooses to do that. But it also allows those two individuals to have a role in curriculum coordination and to help with the infrastructure that we're lacking at the middle school right now. So, for example, one assistant principal could be responsible for math and science, and another assistant principal for humanities and arts. So, it gives, it gives Ms. Bond, I think, a lot more tools in her toolbox. If we do it this way, it's budget neutral, so there's no additional cost. But I just wanted to give the committee any chances to, if you had questions or comments or anything like that, before we posted for that new position.
Never liked the title, Dean of Discipline.
Dean of Discipline. It's true. But anyone who's ever done it knows that it's just, you're a teacher.
Yeah.
You're just working with, working with some of the kids who are, give us a little more challenge than some of the others. So, I don't know if they have any questions about that. That's all I had to report.
Do you just post that position?
We'll post that, yeah. We'll be posting that tomorrow morning.
I think it's a great idea. Two middle schoolers, I know, that, students, I think it's such an awkward page that I feel like they end up sort of into things when they didn't need to get there and everything else. So, I can only imagine what they deal with on a daily basis.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a great idea. Thank you for thinking about it.
Sure.
I think it's a great idea. I'm looking at it, thinking, is it better to split it by grades, to split it by alphabet? But then, the more I think about it, splitting it by the alphabet, I don't know, it might make more sense because in that one dean, if you have a repeat offender, he's gonna have an established relationship with that person throughout the four years versus, you know, two years I have him and then two years Dick has him.
That's right.
So, you know, but again, that's, that's your call.
Yeah, and one of the things to think about in that case is, and Ms. Bond and I have talked about it, if you're the assistant principal for Grade Seven and Eight, I was, I was an assistant principal for eight years, so I understand this process. I developed a lot of relationships with grade, with the teachers of my students with whom I worked. So, if they were juniors and seniors, I developed relationships with those junior and senior teachers, and I was better able to help those students navigate or help the teachers work with challenging students. So, really, it allows your assistant principal to become a real resource for the teachers, not just the students. It's, it's...
Form a stronger team.
Yeah. So, but Ms. Bond, that'll be, as you said, that'll be Mrs. Bond's decision, how she wants to break that out. Okay? Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to reports. We have the monthly reports for April. We have the administrators' reports from Dr. Harrison, Ms. Bond, Ms. Smith, Ms. Scheifli, and Ms. Sheehan. We have the guidance report from Mrs. Black, the nurses' report from Mrs. Ryan, and the pupil personnel services from Dr. Minigula. May I have four motions?
Four motions.
Great. Thank you. That's a vote. School newsletters for Esten, Jefferson, Memorial Park, and the middle school and the high schools. And as usual, they are very colorful, and I read them and find them very entertaining to what the schools get to do.
I like the colors on them.
Right. I like to get to know what the students are doing during the day. Moving on to building rentals for April. As usual, the schools, I think, are sort of winding down. Basketball is over, and, but we still seem to be pretty busy, so that is good. Let's skip to curriculum corner and move that. Onto the fundraisers completed. We have the Esten PAC did a dining for cause. They raised one thousand forty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. The Esten PAC also did an ice cream social raffle night. They raised five thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-nine cents. And the Esten PAC also did Hilliards Candy Bars. They raised one thousand one hundred and seven dollars. Congratulations to the Esten PAC. Being in these packs are not an easy challenge, so I can appreciate that. Thank you for all you do. And moving on to new business, we have the Rogers Middle School PAC report and school improvement plan. Ms. Bond?
Our school improvement plan, let me just start by saying, I can talk about all this paper and show you all these things, but the coolest part of the improvement is the kids that we just saw. And the growth that we've seen from our kids as they go from elementary to middle. And for us to be able to come and see all those kids that were recognized, I think it makes me feel like some of that hard work that the teachers are doing at the middle school is paying off because those kids are fantastic. So, I'll keep talking about the paper, but you keep paying attention to the kids. Let me just start by the student learning goal by saying that we've made some great gains this year with Mrs. Frilisi being a part of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. We've really built some bridges as far as our curriculum with the fourth and the fifth grade is concerned. We started there. We're gonna continue with our math work. We did some math work last year. We're gonna continue by forming a committee to look at big ideas and some other curriculum we've been presented with, which is very exciting. And Mrs. Frilisi's calendar of reviewing curriculum, which is, I believe, a five-year plan. ELA and Social Studies is up next year, so we'll be reviewing that curriculum at department meetings. We've moved our emphasis on interdepartmental meeting time to next year because we spent a lot of time this year on our Social Studies curriculum, which was new because of the frameworks, and our math because of our big ideas and looking at our math. So, we moved that ahead a year. And next year, we're planning to work a little more closely on the high school side as far as expectations are concerned, and continue to work with the fourth and fifth, the fourth grade to fifth grade. We are going to be adopting the Eye Ready Assessment Program in place of Galileo, so a lot of our time will be spent on learning that program, collaborating about the assessment data. And then, most importantly, and I underline this in my paperwork, is reflecting on our instructional practices. Not just taking the test and looking at the data, but then what do we do next for our top kids, for our kids who need support, for everybody? How do we make that, you know, show some, some growth? PBIS is going to continue. Our guidance, which is fantastic, has asked to get more into the classrooms to work with our kids as far as instruction is concerned. We're gonna continue to work with our at-risk kids. How do we know who those kids are? And then, what do we do more importantly for them next? Again, our Eye Ready is gonna be an emphasis. And next year, I really want to look into how we're using Google Classroom, assess our use of Google Classroom, and then do some more training because a lot of our staff is using it, and I think we need to have that as a common goal. PBIS has been very successful for us, as well as our Alice training, so we'll continue with both of those. Our staff has asked for some specific PD as far as special education co-teaching and behavioral instructions. So, based on their requests, that will be our focus for next year. As far as our PD is concerning, with a big focus on co-teaching and regularity teachers and specialty teachers working together, this is, again, standard from student learning goal number one. So, as far as data, again, instructional support for our struggling learners is going to be a focus. I added that in a couple of our bullets because it's important to figure out, looking at the data and then what the kids need. We had a great focus this year on lesson planning, on our objective, our agenda, and our assessment so that teachers know exactly what they're teaching, why they're teaching, and how they know that they've taught it. Next year, we're gonna continue to look at that as far as how we are focusing on our kids being creative, good presenters, and showing how they analyze things that they learn. As far as our communication and our resource allocation, there's not much that has changed for us. Google Classroom, again, learning how to use that. Enhancing our website by putting our curriculum maps right onto the website. We have an overview of curriculum, but next year, we're gonna put the maps, link them right up. And then, a goal that I have in two places is defining our administrative responsibilities with the addition of our administrative staff, figuring out how we're doing it, why we're doing it, who's doing what, and all that stuff. And let me just say that I'm very grateful for this new position. If you remember years ago, there were three, three grade levels in the middle school with a part-time assistant principal. We now have over seven hundred and twenty kids with significantly more needs, significantly more curriculum expectations, and our goal is just to keep moving that curriculum forward. And our assistant principals are a huge part of that. So, any questions?
I just have a few comments. I have, you know, this, a seventh grader and a fifth grader, and I also get to sit on student council with you. Google Classroom is huge in the seventh grade. It takes away that panic of the child getting home and thinking, oh, no, I forgot, or I'm not quite sure what I need to do. They can log right in. It gives them the responsibility. And I think it's a great asset to have. So, you working into that, I think, is a great idea. And I appreciate that all you guys do for our students. I do see progress in my own, too. I have a fifth grader as well. And just the difference between her from Memorial Park up into the middle school and him into the seventh grade is, you can see them coming along, like you said, with these students. It is astounding, their maturity and their responsibility that they're catching on, that it's on to them.
It's the coolest thing in the world, right?
It's very cool.
It's just the coolest thing in the world.
We went to the Science Museum yesterday, and Kevin was actually, like, commenting on things. I was like, you are actually paying attention! But it was that. It was the maturity that he's actually getting what he's learning and being able to spill it back out. Right. So, thank you for all that you do.
I compliment you guys because I think you teach, pardon me, Dr. Harrison, one of the toughest group of kids that any district has. The middle school kids, everything is going on, everything's boiling. And you keep everything very nicely under control. Kids get great educations, great staffs over there to go on to Dr. Harrison. And I just compliment you and everyone who's working with you. It's great to see you.
I appreciate that. It's a fantastic staff, Harris, everybody. It's fantastic staff.
It's social, emotional, and academics at that age. I feel like they're so socially awkward, you know, and then to add in their, their academics. Oh, I know.
It speaks a lot when you look at the high school guidance report and it says that there's a hundred and thirty-four students taking two hundred and sixty-six AP exams.
Right.
Those kids all came from one place.
Right.
They came from you guys. So, if we're getting that much AP exams, you guys are on the right track. And I'm very proud to say that. So, good job.
Great. Thank you. I'll introduce Nancy Anderson, who's in charge of our PAC. And just would like to officially say in front of everybody, thank you very much to our PAC for doing some great fundraisers for us and a wonderful staff appreciation. Last week, we were very grateful. So, thank you.
We're very grateful to you. Thank you. Hello, my name is Nancy Anderson, and I am the chairperson, for those who don't know me. We had quite a few fundraisers this year. I came from the elementary school two years ago, and it was a big difference. A lot of money made there. Middle school's a tougher crowd, but we did some good things. We did Hilliards Candy for a hundred and sixty dollars. Little Caesar's Pizza, we did eight hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. We did a calendar raffle in November, which was a big hit. It was nineteen hundred dollars. We did the Scholastic Book Fair, and the teachers in the school are gonna get, well, they got a thousand and ten dollars to use for things for the school. So, that was a good deal. We did the Bulldog Sacks, thanks to Jill, and we're still doing that, if anybody's interested in the little drawstring bags. They're seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. That's what we made so far. We still have some. The Classic, which is always a big deal, we did two thousand and twenty-one dollars and eighty cents. And we also had raffle baskets that were four hundred and sixteen dollars. And we did a calendar raffle again for May, which made four hundred and one dollars. And we did a hundred and nine dollars in box tops. And we're working on it, getting there. Hopefully, next year will be even better. We did, we were able to sponsor a lot of things this year. We did half of the agenda books for next year for twenty-five hundred dollars. We did the field trip buses for four thousand for all grades. Teacher Appreciation Week was seven hundred and fifty dollars, which they deserve everything they get because they're wonderful. The Education Foundation, we're sponsoring a hole for the golf tournament for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we're looking forward to a great year next year. We've already got a lot of things in the works, and hopefully, it'll be a lot of fun again. We love working with Ms. Bond and Ms. Shipper and the entire team. Everybody was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, for all you do. It's not easy up there in the middle school, so I appreciate... You're doing it, though. I just show up. So, thank you for all of that. Next, we have approvals for fundraisers. Boys' Track, they're doing a car wash in June. And the freshman class are doing grand lawns, grad lawn signs in February. Two motions? All those in favor? Thank you. And the request for approval for the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty Rockland High School Student Handbook. It's the first reading. Dr. Harrison?
Thank you again for letting me speak tonight and to propose the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty Student Handbook changes. There are a few significant changes, so feel free to interrupt me at any point just to ask for clarification. If I'm going too fast, slow me down. The first three bullets, there's nothing significant, updating rosters and, you know, testing dates. But the second bullet and the third bullet, we've spoken about when we proposed the program of studies, which was already approved, just that we're limiting the number of study halls. A student who has two, multiple advanced placement classes can have just to one. As well as class rank, we're increasing the frequency of calculating that. So, class rank and GPA are calculated at the conclusion of each term versus, depending on the grade level, it used to be calculated at the end of the third term or at the end of the year. So, we just wanted to have consistency there. The fourth bullet, After-School Support Program, we've already changed the name to that, but it used to be the Homework Club. So, we switched the name of it to the After-School Support Program, and it has merged the three-to-five, which was previously the three-to-five program, and the Homework Club. We've merged them to become the After-School Support Program. For Travel Club Language, there used to be a bullet that said, "Students who are in good standing." And we thought that was too vague because we didn't have a definition of what good standing was. So, we, Ms. Walsh and I had worked to clarify what good standing means. So, the bullets underneath Travel Club Language are what we define as a student in good standing according to the Travel Club policy. So, it talks about a number of absences, students who are suspended that may be removed from the trip. And really, not failing more than one course, then you're put on probation for a time period. One thing to think about is it's important to add clarity for families so that before they make the decision to go on the trip, that they understand what are the ramifications if you don't meet the academic attendance or conduct expectations of the school. So, what this does, I believe, is just adds clarity for families and students versus saying, oh, well, no longer, you're not in good standing, or not, you are in good standing and you're not in good standing without a definition. The big change really talks about, actually, I'm getting to the big change, but on the second page where it says, "Failure," highlighted in yellow, "Failure to comply with school-wide safety procedures or behavior that threatens the safety of others." We added this in this year because in all of our classrooms, we have these lockdown devices now that we purchased as part of our Alice training protocol. But these lockdown devices really require a significant amount of student responsibility. So, we want to make sure students understand that these devices you never play with. You never take them from the box unless there's a real emergency. So, we thought it's important to have in our handbook language that reflects the seriousness if school safety procedures are not followed. And then, the big change is the bottom page, too, which talks about our chemical health policy. We're kind of renaming it to Chemical Health. That's the new buzzword with substance abuse. This policy was written with the advice of our school attorney, and I would strongly recommend we adopt it. What it really takes into consideration is the increased use of vaping that schools are seeing and how to word it because it seems like every week, there's a new thing out there, whether it's a vaporizer, an e-cigarette, an aerosol, whatever it is, it seems like it's new. So, this policy, we believe, really adds language. Anything highlighted in yellow and bolded has been added to it. So, I think that is just, covers us on so many levels. To include anything that could have bad stuff in it falls under chemical health. The page three, the consequences, we've changed to add in what we call a diversion program. So, a student who's suspended from school, we will give them on their first offense the option to be suspended by a reduced number of days, but they can participate in a diversion program, which is an educational component. That educational component, we want to keep as evolving. So, for example, we piloted it a little bit this year with a few kids. First, we started by having them, you know, visit with the school nurse, the school resource officer to learn the legal aspects and the health aspects of vaping or substance abuse. Then, it evolved to having Rockland Carers come and do a presentation for kids. Then it evolved to having Rockland Cares come and do a presentation for kids, because we thought, oh, let's try to get Rockland Cares involved. That was very successful, but they obviously can't come every week. So trying to find the balance. We've explored an online program as well. So we're juggling to find next year what the best diversion program is for kids. But what that means is finding an educational component to support the consequence out of school. The policy, what we've removed is in red on the remaining pages. We basically took out the smoking and nicotine policy, because that's morphed into one policy which falls under chemical health.
Okay.
And that's for chemical health. On page five, where it says field trip policy, that's the final change. And our faculty had a subcommittee this year. We wanted to try to clarify what the expectations are for students and staff revolving around our field trip policy. And we really wanted to differentiate between academic field trips and extracurricular field trips. And the key difference, just to summarize, is academic field trips, no student should be denied access to participate due to academic performance in classes, attendance, or financial constraints. Students can be denied access for repeated conduct infractions at the discretion of the assistant principal. You really, so sometimes you have a field trip, it costs $25, but sometimes a kid isn't as forthcoming if there's a financial need. But the advisor, whoever's planning the field trip, if it's an academic field trip, needs to really have a proactive plan to address it for students who have financial need, because it's expected that the child will go if it's an academic field trip, because you're in their regular, that's their education for that day.
Right.
Extracurricular field trips are a little different. So if, even if a kid is failing every class, they still have the right to go on that academic field trip. If it's an extracurricular field trip, we're proposing that we adopt the policy we use for sports. So if you're failing more than one class in the prior marking period, you wouldn't go on the field trip in that next, that current period. We felt that was important, because extracurriculars are a privilege, not a right. That's the difference between the two. And I think that, because if you're failing five classes and then you're going to your mock trial competition, that's not really sending the message that academics are the priority or any of our clubs and activities. So those are the changes. I went a little quickly, but if you want me to elaborate more, I'm happy to.
The first question I have is the one that says class rank and GPA. It says, it said everything in the red was removed. That one says added language. Is it added or deleted?
So the red is removed, but the added language will just be class rank and GPA are calculated at the conclusion of each term. So that'll be the new language that's replacing what's in red. So in red, it talks-
That's added.
Okay, I guess it's added, yeah.
Yeah, it does say added up there.
Yeah, okay. All right, all right. How long has this been published?
Say that again?
How long has this been published?
It has not been, this document here?
So this is the first time?
This is the first reading.
So this is the first, we're gonna leave it as the first reading.
Correct.
Because sometimes we, you know-
There's no urgency with this.
There's no urgency, okay. That was my next question. So it's first reading. Make a motion at the table.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
So it says overnight and out-of-state field trips. Should it be out-of-the-country field trips as well, just because we had the presentation with?
That's a great question. Our intent is that the Travel Club policy, they have their own separate policy.
Yeah.
The out-of-state field trip policies, they really follow, we have a school committee policy for out-of-state field trips, so they would just follow the guidelines in our school committee policy.
Okay.
Which is actually referenced there, IJOA. So where it says below the overnight and out-of-state field trip, you'll see, including field trips, IJOA at the bottom there. That's referencing the school committee policy.
Okay.
I know, Doctor, that everyone reads this handbook cover to cover every year. But having said that, some people might prefer a read-as-digest version. And I, could I suggest that if people want to see these changes and additions, that they could contact the principal's office, and you could give them a copy of what we have here? It would be helpful.
I can link them in my next newsletter, too.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So, I was just gonna say, like, as we all go into the bathroom, like, the whole vaping policy, that sort of thing. And maybe if you address this to, like, the freshmen on their freshman orientation or their first day, to, like, set that, like, in the beginning, that maybe that it's more of a big deal in high school.
Yep, definitely. I think that's a good point, because I think, as Jasmine pointed out, we see it in the bathrooms.
Yeah. Also, another thing, Ms. Hoffman has started going to the, into the bathroom during crossing periods, and it's definitely helped-
It's working, right?
Keep the parties out of the bathroom.
That's right, she's doing a great job. Thank you for that.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Yeah, we have a motion.
At the table.
Second.
Why are we tableing it?
Because it's first reading.
Okay, but-
People might have some thoughts.
I mean, I don't think we need to revisit it. I think it's pretty clear. I don't know why we would.
People should have the opportunity to look at it, review it, and come back with questions.
Yep. Fine, whatever. I think it's a waste to do that.
That's why you put it back on.
But that's fine.
Okay, so we have a second? All those in favor?
Nope.
No, you're abstaining.
No, I'm, no.
You're-
I'm a no, not abstaining.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're voting no on the, you're voting no on the revisions?
No, I'm voting no on tableing it.
You're voting no on table?
Yeah, I don't, I don't even need to table it. It's a pretty clear change. I mean, people don't want their kids to get suspended for 10 days, then don't, you know, make sure they're not buying vapes, which are, you can't buy unless it's a 21.
Jane's not gonna be put into effect until next year.
Right. We're on a pretty good timeline.
Right, we have plenty of time.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Okay, next up is Special Education in Summer School. Dr. Menenqua?
Good evening.
Hello, Doctor.
So our special education summer program is a five-week program. It will start July 8th, and it ends Thursday, August 8th. Okay, some of our programs are four-day programs, and they're half-day, and some are three-day programs, depending on the needs of our students. We have two different times. Some of our students come in 7:30 to 11:30, and then some of our kids come 8:30 to 12:30. And that just helps us with the transportation to make sure, so we just stagger them, so we make sure that we have transportation for all of them. We've been very, very fortunate the last, I would say, five years. Ms. Bond has allowed us to use the middle school for our programming, which is great because it allows the teachers to all be together. It enhances their collaboration, their communication, and that they can all participate in the enrichment programs that we have for the kids during the summer. It's a nice combination of academics, but we also, one day a week, have enrichment. We've had, like, the creepy critters come in, and we have that show. We've had storytellers come in, all kinds of music activities. And we also have the ice cream truck that comes and goes to all of the classrooms. The class, kids are able to go out and get ice cream on Wednesdays. So, you know, we've really had a great program for the kids over the last couple of years. We've had a good number of students that consistently attend our programming. This year, we have 11 programs. We have two preschools, programs that we will have our students coming. And this year, our preschool staff participated, along with Mrs. Corvini and myself, in what they call building inclusive communities for preschool students. And we were learning a lot of different strategies. We participated with 11 other community districts. And one of the things that we will pilot this summer is, we have four preschools come in the morning, four come in our afternoon programs. Six of our programs are completely integrated, and two of our programs, we've had substantially separate. And this year, for the summer programming, those two substantially separate programs, we are going to have an integrated program with peer model students coming in to participate with our students that have special needs as well. We have four elementary programs. We'll have three middle school programs, one high school program, and then we offer tutorial services in both math and English, language arts, and written expression for those students that just need a little bit of reinforcement in those areas. So that's basically what our program entails, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think that was very informative, right? Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. And I know you'll introduce it, but we're very fortunate to have our special education PAC chairperson, Michelle Kippingham. She has done an outstanding job with our PAC this year, and I'll turn it over to her.
Do you want to take the vote real quick?
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
I'm just gonna take a real quick vote. It's okay.
You can stand there, you're all right.
Yeah.
We're just getting in our flow. So we're just gonna vote on that.
Vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Okay.
Thank you, members of the Rockland School Committee. As you know, Massachusetts special education law requires that each school district establish a special education parent advisory council. The Rockland CPAC is a group of dedicated parents who are committed to providing information and support to the parents of children with disabilities in Rockland. This year, the CPAC hosted six meetings. In an attempt to reach all parents and students in our community, meetings were held at strategic locations throughout the town, such as the Town Rockland Library, Jefferson Elementary School, Rogers Middle School, and Rockland High School. We received tremendous feedback from parents who appreciated the accessible meeting options. Sending meeting reminders, emails, utilizing social media, and providing a general call by Dr. Cron, thank you, increased attendance. This year, we went from eight people at a meeting to our last meeting had over 50.
Wow.
Yes.
Fantastic.
New parents unaware of our offerings regarding special education are now informed of our meetings and are starting to attend. Our meeting ranged from workshops to social events. As a PAC, we help families get to answer questions and provide resources to better assist their children. The range of topics this year included executive functioning by Dr. Erin McQuaid, a Tools-in-the-Box Strategy Workshop presented by our town behaviorist, Selena Texera. This workshop provided strategies for dealing and managing difficult behaviors in the home and at school. We had babysitting provided on-site by our high school students, so that more parents could attend. The attendees gave positive feedback, making it clear to us, the CPAC, that these are the type of events that we should be providing and that the parents are looking for. We also held a parents' night at the Rockland Memorial Library. Parents there were able to voice their concerns about the happenings in the school system, while also networking with other mothers and fathers, grandparents, dealing with similar issues. Sometimes a parent-to-parent connection can lead to a breakthrough. Due to the success of that night, it will become an annual meeting. It was very moving to see parents supporting each other. My biggest pleasure was being able to assist other parents in answering difficult questions regarding IEPs, physicians, and outside activities for their children. A basic rights and special education event was given by our own SPED director, Linda Miniglia, was key in assisting parents with questions about schooling. The basic rights workshop provides parents with an understanding of IDEA. It was designed to give parents the tools and resources to be effective partners in determining their children's needs for special education and the educational planning and monitoring of their children's progress throughout the school year. We also invited neighboring communities such as Abington, Rockland, well, we are Rockland, Hanover, all the surrounding towns to attend. The utilization of social media was key in bringing in new parents to our events and meetings via Facebook, Everything Rockland, The Real Rockland. We belong to a lot of special needs groups on Facebook, and that has definitely gotten the word out there. Last month, we held our first district-wide PAC meeting. I was very excited about this. The workshop topic was ADHD. It was presented by Laine Doherty. She's the owner and director of the Thinking and Doing Center in Hingham. The event had a record turnout. The CPAC hopes to have more district-wide workshops in the future. We are already planning one for next year. A major focus of the CPAC was to acclimate and assist children with social interactions. We accomplished this through our annual Not So Scary Halloween Party. A music therapist was hired to provide music, sing-alongs, and dancing, as arts and crafts tables were also there, teaching children fine motor coordination. On May 10th, we held our annual toll booth fundraiser. It was a great success. We are able to offer five Rockland residents who are graduating high school this year and will be pursuing their lives in helping children and adults with disabilities scholarships. The Rockland CPAC would like to extend our appreciation and thanks to the community of Rockland for supporting our efforts. It was nice to see people come out with their kids in the backseat with their little bags of change, donating to such a great cause. I would also like to thank the dedicated Rockland Auxiliary Police Officers, Chief Lou Allen, Lieutenant Zioli, Rockland Police and Highway Departments for their continued support. It was amazing to work with such great people. One officer went back to the station to make sure we had enough cones to keep us all safe during our toll booth. Thank you to the school committee, the town selectmen for their continued support in approving our one and only fundraiser, and that's the toll booth, and informing residents of our special education programs. Thanks to Kathy Ryan and the Rockland High School for advertising community service hours for our students that could work the toll booth, and also for our babysitting hours was a big help. We wish to extend our appreciation to pupil personnel services, office and staff, especially Linda Miniglia, Deb Rosser, and Linda, oh, I always say this wrong, Rich Nella, yes, for their continued support. In addition, we'd like to thank Superintendent Dr. Cron, Colleen Frizzelli, Patty Penny, and their administration for their continued support this year and the, all the years we've had in the past. We would like to thank the principals of all the schools. We are looking forward to next year, and with great enthusiasm and lots of fun things to come for all of our students and our parents. One of the things that we are planning for next year, which I am very excited about, is to have a panel right here and have it broadcast with all different things that are happening for our special education students outside of school, such as Special Olympics, swimming, and all the things that are happening that the school does not provide, but parents don't know about. So that's something that we're really excited about. We also would love to line up some interesting topics, so if anybody has any that they would like to offer that we could find for you, we would be glad to do that. We will continue to focus and provide information to the general public, parents and guardians for children with disabilities. We'd like to continue our outreach to surrounding communities and maintain an open line of communication between parents and the school system. By working together, we can help guide all of our children through this somewhat chaotic world we live in. Our environment, our involvement in our children is really an investment in our future and ourselves. Without the dedication of all of us, this school year would not have been so successful. We truly appreciate the assistance in education for special needs children from age three to 22 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the report. Motion to accept the report.
All those in favor? Thank you, Michelle, for all you do. I know it takes a lot of work, so I appreciate every second you PAC people put in. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, too.
So I wanted to provide the school committee and the public with a little bit of a report on our transportation audit findings. I don't know if you had a chance to read the mesmerizing 45-page report, but this is, there were 13 recommendations that came out of the report, and I just wanted to walk through them and let you know what we are doing with them. So first, the purpose of this audit was to investigate areas of potential financial savings, and also to make sure that there, that we're being as safe and secure as possible with our students. This audit was conducted over two days. We had held interviews with staff and principals and, for two days in March, and these interviews, the findings from the interviews were used in the report. They reviewed interview data, policy documents, our contract with first student, and related state and federal laws. Recommendation number one, which you can find on page 15, with, they're recommending that we should advise the contractor that student- that student counts should be conducted by drivers on an intermittent basis. So our finding, we agree. And we're going to ask First Student drivers to conduct student counts once per month, for example, the first Tuesday of every month. So we're going to adopt that recommendation. Second recommendation, fund and employ a full-time transportation coordinator. We're moving toward this. We agree that we need greater coordination. And we've begun discussing implementing this recommendation right now. At this point, Ms. Hackett is going to function in the role of transportation coordinator. And we have Patty Penny and Linda Ricarelli, who manage the regular ed and special education transportation. And they will work together with Jane to make this happen. Recommendation three, purchase bus routing software. We're holding on this recommendation. We have a new, we have a new, what's the type? Thank you, a new dispatcher at First Student. And we're going to hold off on purchasing our own routing software. They use a program called Versatran, and it's the industry standard. So we're going to pass on buying it ourselves at this point. Right. Revisit bus pass policies and procedures. There's a recommendation, you'll see recommendation number 14 is to form a transportation safety subcommittee. And we're going to pass this on to that committee so that they can review our bus pass policies and our procedures. And also, a great task for the new coordinator. The idea here is we're going to look at the distance from homes where we will bus students who are within two miles. We'll have them look at all of those things. Also, if there's a bus stop, for example, that comes up and someone is concerned about the safety of the bus stop, we can have a committee look at it as opposed to an individual. Just makes it a little more, spreads out the responsibility a little bit. Recommendation five, research and purchase bus routing. That one got repeated, sorry about that. Research whether or not there are regular ed students who could better service by placing riders on sped transportation. So one of the interesting points that the auditors brought up was this idea of the possibility of saving, not only saving money by using regular ed and special ed transportation interchangeably, but also the equity question that it raises. We can put regular ed students on special education vehicles. And we can have special education students on regular education vehicles just to break down some of the stereotypes and barriers that exist. So I thought it was an interesting point that they made.
The little buses are special way.
That's right.
So anybody riding the little buses, yep.
That's right. And in some cases, we may use the smaller buses to transport a student who lives on the outskirts. So we're looking at ways to intertwine regular ed and special ed transportation. Yep. Order vans in yellow rather than white for no extra charge. That was a surprise. Evidently, we can order them in yellow rather than white. And then we think they are visually a little more, they do grab the eye a little bit more.
What does it do to the resale value, Doctor?
I think it lowers the resale value, but we're leasing. So I don't know that that's something for us to really worry about.
Not to worry about, okay.
But I believe it lowers the resale value.
We do own one, though, don't we?
Activities, student activities van, yes.
Yeah, that could be white.
Yep.
I think that one is white.
It is.
So the Mass Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Program, again, that's something that we're going to have the transportation coordinator investigate and will involve. We want to, if there's any kind of program that we can circulate amongst our schools for walker safety programs and things like that, we think that the Safe Schools Program will be an added resource for us. Investigate the possibility of leasing or purchasing our own school transportation vehicles. So there's savings. If we could partner with the town at some point to possibly own our buses, we would just need space to house our buses. We'd need a way to fuel our buses, and we'd need a way to repair our buses. But if we did all of that, there is possible savings. It's just a matter of putting all that together.
Fuel and repair at the highway department.
Right.
And probably space.
Probably, right. So it is something for us to talk about in the future with the town.
The security is an issue.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot involved. But we're only running nine buses, so it's not a huge amount of space for nine buses. I was in Franklin the other day.
We're running nine buses.
Yep.
And what's our annual cost?
We spend just about $1 million, but not just for the buses. That's for all of transportation.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So I think it's something that we will want to bring before capital planning, but begin to discuss possibly with the Board of Selectmen. It may be something that if we have a business plan in mind, we go to the town and we say, we may need an upfront investment, sort of like we did with kindergarten. But over time, it would save the town money to invest. But that, we'd have to have a business plan in mind. Recommendation number 10, join the Mass Association of Pupil Transportation. We're going to refer this one to our transportation coordinator and the safety committee as well.
Jane's getting a lot of work out of her.
She is, absolutely.
I think she's going to want another whiteboard.
Ensure, I don't know if we can fit one in her office. Ensure PBIS is extended to buses and bus drivers. And I can tell you, this is happening already. Our bus drivers and buses are using PBIS on a regular basis. So we're going to continue that practice. Ensure the district controls the onboard video recording process. So what's been happening to this point is when we, if something happens on a bus and we request video, it can take one, two, three days to get that video. And it slows down the whole process. So we're setting it up so that we will have access to the video immediately. And Tim Wells is working on that with First Student.
Yeah, transmit it down there.
Right. So we're adopting that. And research and purchase bus, that one just doesn't want to go away.
It's like hunting him.
Yeah.
Gee, I wonder if these people.
I know. But in summary, in summary, we have, there's some simple recommendations to implement, such as PBIS continuing that, in-house video control, regular bus counts. Those things we're going to implement immediately. I think the increase, our coordination between sped and regular ed transportation and the appointing of a coordinator and greater organization, that offers us some potential savings, some financial savings. But also, I just think if we can limit the amount of time kids are spending on buses every day, that would be a good thing as well. And finally, forming the Transportation Safety Committee, again, led by the Transportation Coordinator. But we're just starting to get ideas of who should be on that. But we're thinking that we should have a student and a parent and perhaps a member of this committee on that as well. And thank you to Patty Penny and Linda Ricarelli for all of your hard work because they do an amazing job of coordinating our transportation for us. And the audit really had a lot of great things to say about what Linda Meneglia and her office is doing in special education and transportation. Very creative. They didn't have quite as many nice things to say about how we handle our buses, but that's very typical because you're dealing with a big contract.
How many pages?
Forty-five pages.
Can I get a copy?
Yep, absolutely, it's in your inbox.
We email it, not printed.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't work there, okay.
So I have the copy and then the, I did a cheat sheet of the recommendations. Okay, any questions?
I think that was a game to have it done.
I'm glad you did it. It's been a long time. I mean, I've been around a long time, and I don't ever remember it being done. And I think, especially where we only have the one bidder, we need to know that everything is proper.
Right.
And I'm glad, I'm very happy that you did it.
It is good to get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was great.
And that's it.
Okay. Public service announcements, I'll do it in mine. First, Mr. Morse, ladies first. This is your last public service announcement.
Well, first of all, it's obviously coming around to the end of the year. So don't forget all those end-of-year activities, especially the National Honor Society meeting that'll be happening this Thursday. I'll see you there, Mr. Phelps. And graduation is also May 31st. So be there, come out and support the Classes 2019 and the Bulldogs. Also, it's been a pleasure serving with you guys. It's been a lot of fun and very educational, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
I'm next.
You're next.
Okay. This is my second meeting, so it's going pretty well. This Saturday, I'm going to MASC. It's a training for new school committee members. So I'm definitely looking forward to that. I think that'll be a great resource for me. Also, on Friday night, the football team is having a fundraiser down at Players for Meat Raffle, and I'll be down there as well. My brother's the coach, so he's kind of forcing me on that one. And I'm just looking forward to the future events that I'll be in attendance at. Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Hi, well, it's, as you said, it is getting close to the end of the school year. And there's a lot of things that have to be done, and it has to be done carefully. So we want to be safe. We want to make sure everybody gets to graduation, graduation moves on to the rest of their life.
Fair, good point.
Yeah, so, you know, be careful, be careful. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Phelps?
Just that I'm thrilled about the daycare and how that's working out. My kids went to daycare, you know. It's a great, it's a great thing for the kids of Rockland. It's affordable. People value that program tremendously. And I'm just so happy with all the hard work, as I said before, of you folks, that it has worked out. And those folks are still going to have a very viable program.
I agree. Mr. Raffel?
Can't believe you guys only have six days of school left.
Crazy, right?
That's insane.
Terrifying for me, too.
I think it's more terrifying for mom and dad and having to write the check next year, you know.
Exactly.
Well, Jasmine, it's been great having you on. I hope I still get to see you around the rink until you, you know.
Definitely will. Can't escape that place.
You can't quit it, you aren't even involved. It's awesome. Happy Memorial Day to everybody. I hope everyone has a safe weekend. I know it's two weeks away, but we won't be back until after it. So hopefully, the weather decides to actually act like we're in this type of year, you know, not November. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. And for mine, Jasmine, we have, Dr. Cron has an award. So thank you.
Do you want to, how do you want to do this? Do you want to read it?
Sure.
Do you want to come up, Jasmine? There's a camera pointing at us, I'm sure.
They moved the camera. I've been off the rest of the night. So we want to thank you, and this is our certificate of appreciation. And we all signed it.